All right, this is the Wolfboro Planning Board meeting for September 17th, 2024. My name is Doug Breskin, I'm the chairperson. To my left, we have Vaughn Dugan, Peter Goodwin, Roger Murray. Steve Webster is vice chair. Kathy Barnard, Brad Harriman, and Julie Jacobs as alternate. The first item on the agenda is a preliminary design review consultation for Catherine Marino and LMS Realty Site Plan Review Landscape Improvements at 36 Endicott Street, Unit 1, which is expansion of floor plan. Unit 9, new unit and common area, tax map 217-118-1, and numbers 217-118.
Doug, I have a question. Is this recording?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Is that on, the microphone? That sounds better.
Okay. So I'm Paul DiGeronimo, my wife Catherine Marino, we're at 36 Endicott Street, Unit 1. And we've been there since 2015. In fact, my wife's been here since 1980s. And at the end of Endicott Street, it's an eight-unit condominium project. And it happens to be my mother-in-law, my brother-in-law, another brother-in-law, another brother-in-law. So out of the eight units, the Merinos, my in-laws, have five of the units. We're trying to increase the size of Unit 1. The project was built in 1980. There's probably been very little reinvestment into the property since 1980, including our unit. And our unit has aged quite a bit. In front of our unit, there is a storage closet that we are proposing to move one of the bedrooms into and move those storage closets into a lower level. There'll be no building expansion on the property. So we have approval from the eight-unit owners through amendment, we call it Amendment 8. And we need to have the planning board approve the amendment. The amendment, it cleans up some title issues with LMS, which is the...
If you put it on a chair, I suppose. I apologize, we don't have an easel handy. If you could take the microphone with you?
So I have a series of charts to go through, but I will go as fast as I can because the question here is, the first question here is Amendment 8. So the property is about 59,000 square feet. There's about 58 docks, eight residential units on the property. So there were eight residential units, but to clean up a title issue, the lawyers want to create a Unit 9, which is the condominium, which is the dock owners. And so there'll be nine units here. And that way, it cleans up a title problem because Unit 9 or the dock owner, LMS, will have rights to common area, they'll participate in repairs and maintenance, and it helps, it's more of a title issue that the attorney is involved with. LMS has hired Sabrina Beavers from McLean, and locally, the eight property owners were represented by Randy Walker. So we're looking for your support to get that signed. So and that's twofold. Amendment 8 allows us to move the storage closets from the upper level, the ground level, to what we're going to call a lake level. And then we'll add on some living area. It's less than 400 feet. And then the second part is to create a Unit 9 for the, to clean up a title problem that came from the owners of the docks, which is LMS.
And to be clear, the Unit 9 will not include any living space. It's just for legal purposes, is that right?
That's right. So there's two items that will, actually, in the building, there's two public bathrooms, two bathrooms that are used by the dock people, the dock renters, and then a small storage area that's about 10 by 20 or something like that. So there'll remain eight residential units. And again, there's no expansion on the building.
And there will be increase of habitable space for one unit, is that right?
That's right, without building any area.
No exterior modifications?
No exterior modifications, well played.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, would you like to address the landscape portion of it?
Yes. So back in June, I met with the building inspector and the planning director at the time, and I was told that no permits were required for remodeling of Unit 1, except of course for the building permit. So we moved forward, and we were supposed to have started literally this week on the construction of the property. In the meantime, we went to pull a building permit. I had my architect, the contractor with us, we were told that wasn't the case. And there's some confusion, I'm having some confusion, if we need site plan approval or stormwater maintenance in either of them. This is the lot. The, again, the property, just to show some pictures, has not been touched since 1980. Railroad ties, which I think should be in a museum. The landscaping's been neglected. The blacktop that's there is a trip hazard. You need a four-wheel drive to get down there. So what we're proposing, and I have landscape architect Brendan Casey from, he's a landscape architect, designed for the, I guess, the east side of the property, just this side of the property, some landscape enhancements. So we're going to rebuild all the retaining walls. Instead of blacktop, bring impervious pavers into the area. Pavement that is not needed will be removed. Some fences will be installed. Almost all these fences will be on top of, with this existing retention walls. The retention walls will be rebuilt, fences above that, where it's shown. We're trying to delineate where, if you go to this property, you have 52, 56 parking spaces in the back, a garage. And we're trying to delineate for multiple reasons, the residential area from the parking lot. And we're also trying to create a safety issue from the parking lot. Right now, there's just free flow of traffic that goes through here. Lots of people are walking through. So some of the fencing is for privacy, and we're trying to create the privacy wall by landscaping and try not to have the vinyl fences, but at some places, we need to have that. So when we're in the residential area, you do, we're trying to block the view, enhance the property, so you do not see the 50 cars. Also, we're trying to create safety because people cut through. The bathrooms down below, there's some people that have been down there over the years that shouldn't be there. And of course, just the value of the boats should have some security fencing. So there is some security fencing going on there. So we are preparing to, instead of railroad ties, more contemporary look for retention walls, blocks, pavers instead of blacktop, some fencing and additional landscaping, and some of the landscape islands, we're going to try to frame them with granite curbing. I do have a, the current planning director suggested anything with 60% impervious area needs to go in front of stormwater regulations. But we have only 40% area that is impervious. So we are well below that threshold. So, and after we do this work, there's going to be more area that water can run through. So we do have those calculations for you. So the problem we're having is, none of this seems to fit into site plan review nor stormwater maintenance. Looking at the codes, it doesn't match any of that. Let me continue. We have the demo plan, we'll go through this quickly. We have the material plans. I mean, we've gone into such detail because in June, I was told we did not need any permits. So the conceptual plans, we went there, I had the landscape architect move forward with, these are not construction plans, but planting plans and construction plans, so that we could move this forward. So that's why these are in such detail.
Am I correct, Lake Wanda Passaki is to the left?
Wanda Passaki is, yes, the lake is down here. Yes. So Sean said that replacing the asphalt with pavers triggers site plan review. I don't see that anywhere in the ordinances that that triggers. In fact, it says resurfacing and routine maintenance of roads and parking lots are approved. You don't need to go and get site plan approval or stormwater. The regulations, we're only disturbing about 5,000 square feet. We're only disturbing about 5,000 square feet. The regulation says the threshold is 10,000 square feet. Obviously, it's not a subdivision. So again, we don't see where stormwater maintenance comes into play here because we're not even close to any of the thresholds. Again, resurfacing and routine maintenance of the roads and parking lot are exempt from these regulations. Then she wrote, if the lot is more than 60% covered with impervious stormwater, then 175-21 is applied. Again, we're well underneath that threshold. So site plan review, so we don't feel that permits are needed because we're well under every threshold for stormwater maintenance. The second thing is site plan review, there's nothing here that kicks this landscaping improvement plan into site plan review. There's no use changes, no structure being built, water supply, storage, utilities, signs are not being submitted. Presidential nature on natural features and amenities, we're adding to landscaping. We're not in a flood plain, we're not pedestrian cycling, we're not changing anything, any of the walkway, there's no outdoor lighting. So again, in June, we were told no permits are needed. I came here about a month ago seeking clarity on the confusion that I have. And right now, I still do not believe, and I'm looking for direction, that we do not need to come in front of the board for stormwater maintenance, for stormwater maintenance, nor do we need to be in for our site plan review. And I'd like to get moving on this project, that we should have started this week.
In the plans that you show, there's a fair amount of curbing in walls and whatnot. Are you placing curbing or retaining walls anywhere where they are not presently located?
There is some shifting of some walls, but it's insignificant.
I'm sorry?
There is some shifting of walls, but it is insignificant.
Okay. How do you define insignificant?
Within a foot or two.
Okay. And there's no additional linear length that isn't there presently?
Except for the only curbing that we are adding, that we will remove, if it throws into either stormwater maintenance, is this curbing that's right here that we're proposing. And that is a current landscape bed.
Okay.
And so if that's what's kicking this whole project in the storm, the project is small, it's an improvement to the area. It's improvement because we have a less impervious area. And with the curbing, obviously, we're not going to allow that to throw a site plan review or stormwater maintenance. It's too small of a project to go through that process.
Are you creating or altering any limited common area?
Ask the question again, please.
Are you altering any common area or a limited common area?
Not the common area, but in the lower level, where there was an overhead garage that LMS had, which is probably about 30 by 30 in size, we had to use in that area to put the current storage closets from the upper level to the lower level. LMS will have some of that space, and so we are moving limited common area, we are not touching any common area.
Now is that your Unit 9? Where is Unit 9?
Unit 9, I did not bring that plan, I don't know if you have it in front of you. Unit 9 is a very small storage shed. In that area of storage, one of the storage closets is LMS, which is the docks, which is Unit 9, and then there's two bathrooms. So Unit 9, also known as LMS, which is also known as the docks, will have two bathrooms that are used for the slip renters and a small storage area.
And where is that on the plan?
I apologize, I don't have the building plans here, but that is, so if...
Can you show it? The first plan that you showed, Vaughn is holding up now?
Yep.
Can you show it on there?
Yep. So this, our unit comes out to two-thirds of this jog here. The last third are storage sheds, storage closets. We are moving that. The grade falls away, and there's a garage down here, we're putting them literally underneath each other. So where they were from above, we're putting them below. And those storage sheds, there'll be eight of them, our Unit 1 will not have storage sheds, a storage shed. And the eighth storage shed is the LMS, Unit 9, the docks.
So storage sheds for units 2 through 9?
Right. Yep, yep, you got it.
And where are the bathrooms?
The bathrooms are right next to it, so there's a separate door right here. So you can see the landscaping comes back, and the bathrooms are right here. So there's two bathrooms.
And it looks like, it says 14-foot-wide permeable unit paver dock access. It looks like a boat launch.
It is.
It is.
Yeah.
And it looks like you're gating it now, you're privatizing it?
It's always private. That is owned, this whole area is owned by LMS. This dock is common area to the Kingswood Townhouse common area, so it's not public. Part of the problem over the years is that dealerships from other places in the lake would come over here and use a private dock and launch docks down there. And in the leases, no one's allowed to use this. This is only a, it's a walkway for access, absolutely. But this is a ramp for, not allowed to be used during the summer months for boat retrieval and placing them in the water.
So that is a common area for the benefit of the Unit 9 dock owners?
All the dock, all the, all eight units, yes.
1 through 9?
1 through 9.
Yeah.
That's right. And it's only a walkway from Memorial Day to Labor Day.
And the balance of the year it's open for use as a ramp, is that right?
Only if they're putting the boat in and out of the water. It's only used off-season, may I use that term? Off-season for boat retrieval and putting the water in. And there was a handful of people that do use it. So it's a private ramp.
Yeah. But so to be clear, you're a unit owner, or you two are a unit owner?
Yep.
And you're representing the whole association?
We are Unit 1. My wife owns LMS. And the eight-unit owners sent a letter, I believe that you have, supporting this, and they were represented by a local attorney.
Did the fire department look at this plan for circulation?
No, nope.
So I mean, on the, would you go back to the thing where you said it's less than 60% impervious? There was a map that showed all the parking area?
Yep.
As green. It's actually all parking.
Yeah, but it's not paved.
It's still impervious. So what we really need is some...
Why would it be impervious if it's not paved?
It doesn't matter. Anything that's a gravel drive or anything that's compacted is impervious. You can look it up on the state website.
I will.
Yeah. So that's, so what we need is some calculations to know what the numbers are. Because just showing that as green is a little alarming.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's impervious, it's not impervious.
I've been back there.
I think Vaughn's point is that we're not talking about whether it truly is pervious, it's the definition of pervious or impervious. And in the regulations, bare dirt, for example, is, if it's been driven over by cars and therefore compacted, is considered impervious.
So, and then also, you know, you've got some pervious, permeable pavers proposed for the launch?
Yep.
The launch for just twice a year. That needs a maintenance plan. Those need to be vacuumed basically periodically. And so we'd like to see what that is. So I, and the other thing is, you know, this is removal of material and placement of new material. And there probably should be some silt socks and some showing barriers so that whatever, let's say there's a rainstorm during construction, so that that doesn't run off into the lake.
I agree. What's missing on this plan is some type of fencing or the hay bales at the bottom. That is missing on this plan, I agree.
Yeah. And some calculations.
What kind of calculations?
Impervious versus impervious areas.
The issue here is that all we're trying to do is change the landscaping around, and to throw this into site plan review or stormwater maintenance, it'll stay where it is. And our goal is to improve it. And so if it gets thrown into it, you'll have no improvement there that, we're actually with less, our post and pre, we're reducing the size of impervious area by 2,200 square feet.
And that's great, but I think we need to see the numbers, and we need to see the plan for the improvements so that we know that during the process of construction, none of the silt and material will flow into the lake.
Yep. And I, yes.
One other thing to consider is that whether this fits the definition of redevelopment. And in one of the paragraphs describing redevelopment, it calls for resurfacing of an existing paved surface, pavement excavation and patching that is incidental to the primary project purpose, such as replacement of a collapsed storm drain, landscaping installation and maintenance. So if in fact it is redevelopment, then stormwater review may be required.
What paragraph is that?
This is in, I don't remember what paragraph it is, and I apologize, I don't have that in my notes here.
It's pretty clear, though, in your, the stormwater maintenance, that 171-21, paragraph 5B, resurfacing routine maintenance of roads and parking lots are exempt.
I'm going to see if I can find that paragraph number for you right now.
Do you have any stormwater management on site now?
No. I don't represent the condo association, but I don't think so.
As you make your presentation, I think you need to make sure that the definition of pervious area, as in compacted gravel, is not.
Yep.
And how the present percentage relates to the new percentage. And so therefore, in other words, you're making modifications, and the idea is that we don't want to have an increase in impervious areas. It may end up being that you're improving the situation, given what you're doing. But I think that when you end up making your final presentation, you need to make sure you have that data as to what it was before and what it is in the future.
So I have not sent this to the planning department yet, because I only had the architect with the other day. We're moving 226 square feet impervious surface, just because of pavers, asphalt, and other things, the net reduction is 2,163 square feet, to answer your question.
But at the same time, you seem to be claiming that the parking areas gravel were permeable surfaces, and that is actually not the case.
I'm going to, I'll speak back and review that, thank you.
And I don't, I don't see the letter that says you're representing the condominium association.
I am not.
So this is...
And there is a letter from the president of the association stating that he's on, that the condo association's on board with this.
So I haven't seen that, has anybody else?
Under the condominium act, we're going to need a, well, Randy can fill you in on this, but we're going to need a copy of the amendment in a form...
That's been submitted.
And that's certified, signed by the president and certified by the clerk with the number of vote, people voting in the vote. That's required under the act. And if you're changing, if you're changing a floor plan, you need to submit floor plans under the condominium act. And if there's any kind of change to the exterior, then you may need to be doing a plan showing that.
So we divided this in two ways. Because we were here in June, I was told we didn't need any permits outside of the building department. We were not planning to move forward. We got Sabrina attorney, Sabrina Beavens from McLean, and I came in last Tuesday to make sure that package was here from our attorney. I assume she did it correctly, that's unappropriately. I know that we were working towards that. Here's the problem. I came to the town, and all these things would have been done. Right now, I have a construction crew that was supposed to start today, and we can't get it started. And we would have, I'm a developer, we would have had all this stuff done. But the town told us, I'll find the date, in June, that I met with both the planning director and the building inspector to tell me what I need to do so I could start today. I had been scrambling, and I haven't done this in 30 years, scrambled so much to get a permit for a minor project. This is to invest into the town, make it, if you see the work, who comes in with a landscape plan that actually has a demo plan, impervious size, plantings, product? So we don't do things cheaply or cut a corner, but we are here, and we're going to miss the season because we need to get this project going.
To go back to your earlier question with regard to the definition of redevelopment, Part of that definition reads, "removal of roadway materials down to the erodible soil surface is an activity defined as redevelopment, but simply resurfacing a roadway surface is not."
Well...
I'm just telling you what I mean.
Then you got to get into construction definitions.
I understand.
Because you can't leave, you can't, if you're maintaining a road that is paved 45 years ago, and the lifespan of blacktop is 20 to 25 years, the only way you can maintain it is pulling blacktop.
I appreciate that.
So I think it supersedes that. You have minimum threshold applicability, and it states it. And at this point, I'm not going to go back and forth.
So I think what we do need is some numbers, some verified pervious/impervious numbers, and some kind of a plan for construction and no sultation, and, you know, some kind of maintenance plan for the pavers. plan for the pavers. And I haven't seen the letter that's saying that you're representing the condo association, so I have a problem with that.
Although, to be fair, I don't believe that... The gentleman has said he's representing the condo. I believe the letter only said that they support this job, this work.
Yeah.
But I don't have any...
Yeah, we don't have that either. I understand. But I just want to make it clear for everybody listening.
Yeah.
You have the package that they're requesting, Amendment 8? No, that's not it.
Nope.
Well, we made sure that we met the deadlines, and you should have it.
And you should make sure that you're in compliance with the condominium act as part of this.
Yes, we hired McLean to do the work. Yes.
Okay.
So I can tell you what was included in the packet I received were all the plans that you've gone through. And I don't see anything else with regard to your application, other than these plans.
Okay. Thank you. But the point I think I need is, there's two levels here. I can obviously wait till next spring, the landscaping, so we can work through this. And I still don't believe... But the Amendment 8 needs to be executed by the board so we can move forward with construction into the interior construction over the winter. So those are two different things. We absolutely don't need any thresholds for stormwater maintenance or subdivision on that level. And so it's the outside work that we're talking about here. So we're hoping that we can get on the... We're scheduled for October 2nd or October 1st, the Eighth Amendment approved by the board. And then I can work this through, because I do have some time, obviously, till next April.
Difficult, I think, for us, or certainly for me, to comment on the Amendment 8. I don't have a problem with it. I can't approve it either because we haven't really seen the details of it, other than what you discussed. And hopefully have adequate time between now and then to collect some of the information that Ms. Dugan has described.
So again, two different issues. One is the Amendment 8 that you don't seem to have. And I'll follow through when I can. Because the interim is not here until Thursday, right? And second issue is that this... If this is a different issue that can take a little bit longer, we don't want it to because we need to make plans. But that Eighth Amendment really needs to be addressed as soon as possible.
Well, we've done quite a bit of discussion, I think, this evening on the landscape part of it, not so much on the amendment part. And perhaps that's not as controversial.
That's what I'm hoping for, yes.
And to Mr. Murray's point, we've just got to make sure that it's in line with all the laws, the regulations that Roger had mentioned about the condominium acts.
Yeah, we want to expedite this. We want to do it the right way.
Yes, as do we, as why we're here. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I think it's going to be interesting to see what you can provide before the next meeting. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is Neverland Properties LLC Site Plan Review, Raise Existing Residents and Construct New Residents, Deck and Garage, 90 Key Waden Road, Tax Map 186-4.
Stephanie Richard, Changing Seasons Engineering, representing Neverland Properties. Property is located at 90 Key Waden Road. Down at the... This is the existing survey plan. You guys should have your small copy of it. Lake Winnipesaukee is towards the bottom of the plan there. There's sort of three lots that come down all in a row. Key Waden Road is sort of way up here. Neverland Properties owns all three of them. This one down by the water is the one that we're talking about. This lot here is sort of vacant. It has the septic system for this property that we're discussing. This lot is currently developed. It has a house, garage, utilities, kind of the whole shebang. The proposal is to take down that existing building, garage, the residence, and rebuild The driveway area here will kind of be modified from what it is right now. The garage and the house are all connected, and that's going to change to kind of provide more area to drive in, turn around, all of that. The proposed house and deck are not going to be any closer to the water than they are today. There is a 50-foot setback line shown on your plan, so hopefully you can see that on there to show where that is for what's existing and proposed within that. They are looking to rebuild the septic system down here so that it can be all on this lot, and they don't have to deal with that kind of off-lot beach bed kind of situation. There are some tree removals proposed, mostly dead and dying stuff, as well as some pine trees that, down by the water, just end up making a mess from sap dripping and all of We'll still need to go before the state for a shoreline permit and septic approval as well.
What, if any, change is there in the pervious surface?
That... I don't have those numbers offhand. I know we've already looked at it a little bit. It's not going to be a great increase if there is an increase. Most of the driveway is staying the same. Some of this new big driveway area is already unbilleding. Most of the building is existing building. So that's definitely something, you know, obviously, we need to look at those numbers when we come for the full site plan review. And we'll provide a nice table and all of that. We need it for shoreline as well, so.
So just so you know, there's not only the state shoreline application to the state, which has a list of criteria, trees, grading, all of that information, impervious, an area between 50 and 150 feet with some unaltered area to be maintained or recreated.
Yeah, I do have those numbers on here. We have already looked at that.
And then you also have to do the same for the town, which is a little bit more stringent.
Sure.
So that is in the ordinance, the shoreline ordinance. So it's... Most people do the work for the state, and then they add a layer for the town information.
Right. That's why I'm here first, so that we can get you guys satisfied, because I understand, yeah, it's more stringent.
When you're looking at the shore frontage, you need to make sure you're looking at it with the March 12th, 2024 amendments, which made changes to the requirements for shoreline within the shore front residential district.
So I'm not sure why we're here now. Because...
To get that sort of direction, you know, looking at what we have here as far as, yeah, what you're going to need for site plan review, you know, the shoreline area...
So site plan review is only triggered by a certain amount of excavation. Otherwise, it's purely a shoreline permit.
The shoreline permit not go through the board?
Not necessarily, no.
There is a change in the encroachment of wetlands, apparently. I think I may be reading this wrong. But it's the existing building has, what, 483 square feet of encroachment? And the proposed building has, what, 608? And so therefore, there is a change. And so therefore, that kind of change in encroachment ends up being an issue that we would look at.
Right. So that's something that I wanted to discuss with you. Does that, you know, do we review that here? Is it something that we're going to need to discuss? Are we going to need to go to zoning?
And why is that... Why is an increase of 125 square feet important to this structure?
Just the way that it's shaped and situated to keep it at where the existing...
It's not possible to move the whole structure, you know, four feet one way and have it not an issue?
We've done a lot of moving around with the building. We could always look at it again. I know we had talked a little bit about possibly removing one of the labeled deck down here near the concrete walk. So that's something, you know, if it becomes an issue, removing that might be something that is an option as well to sort of...
Encroaching on wetlands is something that is an issue, and we need to worry about our lakes. It's not trivial. You may have heard of cyanobacteria warnings, and, you know, every single little bit counts. And so I just wonder why, you know, here is another 125 feet of encroachment needed in order to do this project.
Okay.
So, and I guess it's the scale of the plan. I don't see the setbacks drawn to the wetlands areas. You know, there's a 30-foot...
I think it's tough to see on the small plans because there is a lot going on, but...
Where are they?
I can't see them.
I can't see them.
I mean, you're talking about to the lake or what are the setbacks?
To the wetlands.
To the wetlands.
Very poorly, it's 30 feet and 25, no touch. So I see the delineation of wetlands. I just don't see the setbacks.
I mean, this here is one of the... See your mic? I'm sorry.
If you'd like, you can take the mic out of the holder.
Sort of this way is one of them. This note is referring to impact in the 50-foot setback from the lake, to be clear.
There's... So that's all the shoreline applications. That's the one to the state and the one to the town. But to the planning board, we would address the encroachment on wetland issues. Which is within 30 feet of the existing delineated wetlands.
And what triggers that? Like this driveway area is something or just buildings?
Anything that encroaches on the wetlands.
It's existing driveway. Does that change things?
So it looks like there's an additional amount that is encroaching on the wetlands.
From the note or something that you're seeing?
It says here on the diagram, existing building with encroachment of, proposed building with encroachment of, and the difference is 125 square feet.
That's encroachment into the 50-foot setback from Lake Winnipesaukee.
Okay. So we're just missing some information completely about the setback to wetlands.
Okay.
And the other part of that is that it seems to have a private, a paved driveway and a gravel driveway that have no defined boundaries. Okay, just to the board members, this is coming to TRC on October 2nd.
Can you repeat that for me?
Kathy was mentioning that this, you're coming to the technical review committee on October 2nd.
Okay.
Just for the board members here, notifications so they know when that's happening.
Yeah.
Sure.
You're going to need the impervious lot coverage, the area of impervious surfaces. You should be aware that sap-dripping pine trees cannot be removed under the Shoreline Water Quality Protection Act or the Wolfborough Planning and Zoning Ordinance. If you exceed the 25 points, you can, but otherwise, they are required to remain. The... We don't have the area of the proposed or existing structure. The encroachment's been mentioned, and you should look at, particularly at Section 175-67 of the zoning ordinance. And that was what was amended in 2024. And if you want to remove trees, as you suggest, because they're dead or diseased, you need to have that reviewed by the town tree warden. And it also seems if this is coming down, that it needs to meet the 50-foot setbacks. And I'm not sure that the proposed deck does.
That's something that I think it's important to discuss because the proposal is to not move the new structure any closer than the existing structure. So does that... Are we allowed to put something where the existing structure stands today?
Wait, you are extending the deck off the front to the left in an area where there is no deck on the current building? And that is extending it into the 50-foot setback?
That is correct. There is an area of building over here that's no longer going to be building.
Well, I guess I'm not convinced at this point that what you're proposing is more nearly conforming, which is a standard under both the Shoreline Water Quality Protection Act and the town zoning ordinance.
Okay, sure.
I would also appreciate to see a more enlarged map. There is one over here, but it would be nice to have one in the next time.
Yeah, I had provided, I think, a couple of large copies. I was told to do 11 small size and a few large, so.
Thank you.
We can share them, what we have.
Okay. Speaking of trees, right?
So when you come to the TRC, you'll see the fire department...
Bring the mic in.
You'll see the fire department and the town departments weigh in with us down the conference room down below.
So generally, the applicant would attend the TRC as well?
The applicant would. Have you worked with you and the architect?
You've got to bring that mic closer.
Directly with you at the TRC.
Sure.
Run through these issues.
When and where is that meeting held or do we know yet?
I'm sorry, what was that?
When and where is that meeting held?
It's held here in the planning department, in the back of Town Hall. And it is October 2nd, Kathy said?
Right, 9:30.
9:30 in the morning, October 2nd.
You'll receive an agenda. And you'll have to, you need to relook at your natural woodland calculation, taking into account Section 175-67B1, which requires 50%.
That's the town requirement?
Yes, as opposed to the 25 that the state requires.
Sure.
Any other questions for us? All right. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Oh, eventually, we're going to need elevations of the buildings and any other structures, which is built out between the Shoreline Water Quality Protection Act and the shoreline regulations for the town.
Well, that's a building height issue. I don't know what other issues there are on the shoreline end of it.
There's a requirement for specific elevation and does have the height in there of the of the structures. It's either the state or the town.
I'm sure if you speak with the interim planner, she can let you know everything that you'll be, you'll need for the technical review committee.
Okay, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is, again, preliminary design review consultation with Hancock Lumber Company, site plan review for redevelopment at the site, 100 Pine Hill Road, tax map 175-10. Good evening. You can bring that around the side if you want to bring it closer.
My name is Jordan Gagnon with Sabeo Technics on, here on behalf of the applicant Hancock Lumber Company. With me today is also Kelsey Weir from.
You need to be pretty close to the microphone.
I'm just going to hold it. I think that'll be easier for everybody.
Sure.
Trying to readjust it. Again, my name is Jordan Gagnon with Sabeo Technics on behalf of the applicant Hancock Lumber Company here. Also with me today is Kelsey Weir of Sabeo Technics. So a quick introduction of the project. We're here for site, site plan review for a proposed redevelopment of an existing lumberyard at 100 Pine Hill Road. Hancock Lumber is looking to redevelop the back portion of the lumberyard for use as their new facility. The redesign is mainly focused on what is existing gravel area for lumber storage in the back of the yard. That area is existing impervious. We are not increasing any impervious area. We are redeveloping some of that area to be paved area and we're adding five lumber trees in that area. We're also adjusting the site lighting a little bit to add some hooded lights to those lumber trees. I think that gives a pretty good summary and we'd love to answer any questions you may have.
What does a lumber tree look like?
That is a great question and we will, it basically is two poles on either side that will hold long planks. We actually do have elevations of what the proposed lumber trees will look like that we'll include with the final application when we come back to you guys.
I would imagine a lumber tree looks sort of like a kayak and canoe rack, but much larger.
Yes, very similar.
Are they uncovered?
They will be covered, yes, and the underside will be lit. That will be the only new lighting that will be proposed on the site and it will be hooded, pointed down, and avoidance of all light pollution. When we come back to you guys as well, we will also include a photometric plan showing the photometrics of the entire site.
Okay, and the pole barn, that's also going to be new, right? That's more of a structure?
Yes, that's a little bit more of a structure that will be relocated in the new design out there, but that will also be a covered structure for lumber storage. Little different than the trees, more of a true enclosed structure.
These lumber trees that are covered are going to be on existing impermeable spaces?
So the area back there is all impervious gravel currently. That we're going to pave it. This is actually the demo plan that Kelsey is flipping around here.
So there's, there's no real change in impermeable surfaces?
No, the existing development there is at the lock, the percentage lock capacity for impervious surfaces. So we're actually maintaining the impervious coverage across the lot. To be exact, we're actually reducing it by 55 square feet. But it's going to be right at 3.3 acres, which is what is out there now, minus 55 square feet. We're getting rid of some of the existing impervious gravel in some of the areas. That will be replaced with some reinforced grass area that will be pervious.
But then you're also proposing to have what directs stormwater to filter a storm systems to meet stormwater treatment requirements?
Yes, so we are changing a little bit of the existing stormwater that's out there and I'll actually let Kelsey speak on that.
Hi, I'm Kelsey. So existing, there's a culvert that crosses the entire site that's currently undersized and buried and clogged. And there's one catch basin in the middle of the gravel area that's there.
And those exist now?
Those exist now. So that is this red line right here with an existing catch basin. So to meet stormwater requirements for redevelopment, we need to treat 30% of the existing impervious lot coverage. And so we do that by including two storm trees, which treats just over an acre of impervious area, which is each that 30%. And then we also have several more catch basins proposed and we're going to replace the culvert that crosses and upsize it so that it flows better across the site.
So the drainage goes from left to right?
Right to left.
It goes left to right. There is an existing culvert that it drains to over here on a unnamed access road.
And your grading and utility plan shows some kind of structure in the wetland setback and buffer over on the right. That's sheet five.
Did you say sheet five?
I have a sheet five, yeah.
Did you say five?
Yes, five.
Sheet five of eight.
I don't see it.
What structure?
It looks like a little trapezoid.
Yeah.
That is a riprap apron. So it allows the water that is exiting the culvert to dissipate energy and so it won't erode the ground.
Is that existing?
No, that is proposed.
Construction is not allowed in the wetland setback, which is 25, actually the buffer. The setback is, the buffer is 25 feet. The setback is 30 feet.
So there is an existing culvert there that needs to be replaced. So are we not allowed to remove that existing culvert and improve the drainage across?
It extends into there?
Yes.
It extends into there presently?
Yes.
So it's a culvert outflow?
Yes.
Yeah. And what you're proposing is detailed sheet seven, a riprap apron?
Yep.
Right. Could you move the apron up the hill so that you're outside of the?
The issue with that is this site does not have a lot of elevation change. It is relatively very flat. And so currently, the pipe, the culvert existing, is laying flat. There is no slope to it. So we want to add some slope so that the water moves. And so when there do get leaves and muck in the culvert, it can have enough slope to pass through it. So we're trying to increase the slope and with that, it needs to be pushed in a little bit more.
So it's also deeper then? It's dug in deeper?
Lower in elevation.
Yes. Currently, we don't have the invert of that culvert because it is buried. Yeah, the culvert invert is not visible. So we are outletting it at elevation 604?
I'm sorry, could you pull the mic a little closer?
Sorry. We're outletting it at elevation 604 and we don't know the current elevation that it is outletting because it is covered.
You're going to supply something on lighting and we'll get elevations of the pole barn and the lumber trees. And you're going to need a state permit?
So we are, will not need a state permit for the stormwater, but we will need a state general construction permit.
A what permit?
The state construction general permit, excuse me.
Demo? Did you say state demo permit?
Just a construction general, general permit. Our actual impact area is less than 3,000 square feet. So we will not need an NPDES permit through the state.
And you'll have something on what, if any landscaping? There's going to be any trash, new trash facilities, snow storage back there?
So yes, we're not altering the existing positions of the trash pickup, but we will include on the detailed outplans. When we come back to you guys, we'll make sure we highlight the area for snow storage for that back portion.
Your checklist said you submitted authorization from the authorizations. There was one in there from Hancock Lumber for you to represent them. There wasn't one from the property owners?
Yes, the purchase and sales is still in progress, but we will have a copy of that submitted with the final application showing the right title and interest of the site.
I appreciate the fact you used the checklist.
Of course, it makes our life easier as well.
Do you know when you'll be coming for formal review?
So we will be at the TRC meeting October 2nd as well. And then we will be back for formal review at the, I believe it's the November 5th planning board, but I could be wrong.
November 12th.
12th, sorry.
The dates changed because there's something else happening on the 5th.
All right, so yes, then it would be the 12th.
In any case, the first meeting in November.
Yes, first meeting in November.
Any other questions from the board? Or from the applicant?
A final say on how you guys feel on that outlet and if you would like to, if that needs to be reevaluated. It's something we can go back and look at, but we'd like any feedback you have now before we come back for final would be wonderful. And it may be something that we learn more from TRC review as well.
Yeah, the conservation will attend that meeting and they will have some comment, most likely.
Wonderful, thank you guys so much for your time.
All right, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda for discussion items is the dwelling unit definition, which we discussed at the last meeting. It's appropriate now to, I believe, move it to public hearing. Is there any further discussion on that? And if not, could we have a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to move this to the public hearing. On December 17th, perhaps?
Yes.
That is what Leanne suggested.
Would you like to add that to your motion, Kathy?
Okay.
So the motion's been made to have a public hearing for dwelling unit definition on December 17th. Do we have a second?
Second.
Peter seconds it, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. The next item is the conservation subdivision, article 24, to move to public hearing. Again, it's been suggested to have that also on December 17th. Any further discussion?
How about a second?
Seconded.
I'm sorry, Roger, did you make the motion?
Oh, you were, no, I guess I did, I seconded it.
All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. The next item was.
Is that going to be on what date?
That's also on the 17th of December. Excuse me. The next item is further discussion on short-term rentals. So we went through this, I think, pretty thoroughly at the last meeting. And in your packet, you have a clean copy of how it had been amended. Is there any further discussion on that? And if not, should we then propose a hearing and move it to a warrant article? No discussion or no thoughts?
I have a thought. Do we have a definition?
Do we have?
Top of the page?
Yeah.
It's at the top? Okay.
Very first thing, yes.
All right.
So on your page there, it's essentially two separate warrant articles, I believe. The first one for terms defined, 175, 175, to define short-term rentals. And then below that is a yet-to-be-numbered article on short-term rentals.
And we're going to hold a public forum on this, correct?
That's right.
Can we do that on October 15th? Well, it's October, is it the 15th?
I think you have the date correct.
Probably October 15th. Or I think the sooner the better?
Yes.
Yeah.
October 15th is the work session in, in October. So, you know, want to have a public forum then to discuss this with the public and get feedback and determine if that's how the electorate would like to proceed.
Just, just one thing. It says now the criteria for approval were permitted by special exception. It seems that that special exception, we may have to take a look at that and change some wording in there. And that would require another, another issue.
Yes, and Kathy, I agree with you. And I think part of the reason for the public forum is to get the public's feeling on, in part, special exception versus conditional use permit.
Well, yeah, it doesn't really say that.
I understand, yeah.
Yeah. But that is another option. In either case, both of them would require additional wording for the conditional permit or for the special exception. But we'll talk about that if.
Yeah. Yeah, that'll be an open discussion. All right, so let's move that to discussion on October 15th.
So I have a comment on A2. All doors and windows designed to open must be able to be open to provide emergency egress. That's not really how the egress code works. So, you know, I think that every living space has to have two means of emergency egress. That's a code issue. The way this is written, it's like every window and door has to be able to be opened and then you're confusing it with emergency egress. That's a different size unit. It's not about it being able to open. Of course it is, but it's just not ordered.
It's confusing the meaning of it.
Yeah, yeah.
And presumably, if the building complies with the current fire code, it's going to have the proper egress in each living space already.
Right.
I think the purpose of this was to ensure that the doors and windows, as approved for emergency egress, were operational, but perhaps there's too many words in here to confuse it.
There's something confusing in here.
Yes.
How about if we tried all doors and windows designed to provide emergency at, or emergency egress must be able to be opened, something like that? I took this out of.
Well, it might be easier just to say that.
Emergency egress must be in compliance.
Yeah, right, you don't need to say doors and windows.
The openness is weird.
Yeah.
Able to be opened.
If it's not opened, it's not an ability egress.
Right. I think, as you said, if all emergency egress must be in compliance.
Yeah.
With applicable codes. Okay, so the proposal is to do what?
To change 175-blank A2 to read, "All emergency egress must be in compliance."
Okay. With any particular code for them?
Yes, that's correct, Roger, thank you. Yes, that's correct, Roger, thank you. Any other comments before we move on?
Vaughn, do you have any suggested code to reference here?
I'm not a code number memorizer, sorry.
But we, I'll look it up.
Fire code or?
Well, it's residential building code.
Who is?
It's residential building code.
Or all applicable codes?
Is it off? Hello? Looks like it's on.
Yours may not be working.
It's not.
And it may not be working in here, but it's certainly working on YouTube because you're giving some ear pain up above.
Oh, sorry.
Don't tap on the mic.
It's working.
It's working? Okay.
All right, any other comments on the-
Yeah, we probably need some article in the paper.
Yes, it needs to be noticed.
Okay.
We certainly need to notice it if we want people to attend.
Right, I mean, do we want that in just a regular, like we do for the public hearings and things?
Yes, I think we do, yeah. We certainly want to get the word out. All right, if we could then move on to the next item on the agenda, which is multifamily Again, this is for a proposed warrant article, and it will require at some point a public hearing, but I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we also wanted to have a forum on this as well. We have the proposed wording in front of you with having multifamilies in each of the zoning chapters, so that it would, it's not proposing to change any of the current multifamily, only to show the references so that it's clear in the warrants where it applies.
Doug asked me to try and group what Tavis and Didmanus, and basically the first one does the residential district so that where they're currently permitted by the multifamily ordinance, they now appear permitted uses in those districts. And then the second one removes the residential apartments not permitted on the first floor. It currently appears in Wolfboro Falls and Bay Street and simply puts multifamily dwellings in accordance with Section 175, 143 through 145, which is the multifamily ordinance. And then the next one addresses the fact that, as currently worded, you're allowed one multifamily dwelling per lot in the Pine Hill Road Development District, and this changes it so you can have more than one. The next one changes multifamily housing to multifamily dwellings in the South Wolfboro Limited Business District. And then the last one deletes Center Street, Route 28 Mixed Use Business, includes the Route 28, Center Street, Route 28 Mixed Use Business District as not being subject to the commercial district requirements in the ordinance.
Thank you for the clarification, Roger.
What?
I said, thank you for the clarification.
Huh.
So again, if I'm not mistaken, we would also like to have a public forum on this to get the public's feedback on these proposals, is that right?
Okay, so that could be the same meeting?
Yes, could be the same meeting, and that will allow us to have-
I mean, these are pretty much housekeeping things.
Yes, I agree they're housekeeping, but we still would like to give the public opportunity to provide feedback, I think.
Are we talking about scheduling it on the 17th of December or something before then?
I would hope before then, ideally, we would have it at the October 15th meeting.
Yeah, right. The public meeting.
Yeah, at the same time as the short-term rental.
What I would like to see on these five articles is a short bullet point on each of them saying what they do, as in, in 15 words or less, or 20 words or less, what it actually accomplishes.
Okay.
Just because there is lots of verbiage here, which is required legally, but it is hard for many people to look at that and say that this is to do this, and that is essentially what we're really trying to do. We have, you probably could summarize what is being said there in 10 words or less, maybe 15, but we just need to have that as part of what we're presenting.
Essentially an interpretive statement.
Yeah.
I was on the Multenborough site, they're doing some homework on my own property, and I happened to look at the warrant articles that they were proposing for this year, they had a very simple, concise, this is what it is, this is why, so if you look at the Multenborough proposed warrants, they do, pretty good to me.
Thank you for the recommendations, Steve. All right, next item on the agenda is food trucks. If you watched the ZBA last night, you would see that the Putters Village food truck was before the ZBA for variance, and it was dismissed. The interpretation was that, as I understand it, the, what we colloquially call a food truck is not a food truck according strictly to the Wolfboro definition. So it seems to me that it is, at least for our purposes at the moment, a settled issue. I wonder if anybody here has any thoughts on that?
Well, we're talking about potential change to our ordinances, where-
At the moment, I don't believe we are.
We are, so, I mean, I think if we're curious about what the public wants, perhaps we could propose a question to be put on the ballot, to see whether or not we work on this issue or not. It hadn't been an issue before this last incident, and I think the problem is enforcement irregularity that-
That may be, I think, after watching last night's ZBA, I think perhaps it was a difference of interpretation of the ordinance rather than enforcement issue.
What was the outcome last night?
So in the current definition of vending carts or vehicle, and this is not exclusive for food trucks, but to any vending cart, it defines it as a mobile portable device, comma, not associated with an approved business at the site, comma, that is designed, constructed, or used to sell prepared foods or goods to the general public at a fixed location. So the key part of that that was under discussion last night was where it says, "not associated with an approved business at the site." In the case of Putters Village and the food truck, that food truck is associated with that business and therefore doesn't fit the definition of vending cart or vehicle. I think that if it in fact is an approved business, associated with the approved business at the site, and they are now selling food where there was, where there is also the golf course, perhaps it's then an expansion of use and it needs to go before site plan review. But that's, of course, a separate thing from being prohibited altogether.
Well, I certainly think that any additional commercial use needs to be, come before the planning board for site plan review.
Doug, did we get an answer back from the lawyer of the question that we asked last meeting?
I had some discussion with the interim planner about that, and based on her response, I did not present that question to the council because it didn't seem to apply any further. The answer that I got was that with regard to the Board of Selectmen's ability to authorize vending carts, whether they be food trucks or otherwise, the purpose of having temporary event permits in large part is to allow the Board of Selectmen to essentially avoid regulations for those temporary events, and therefore the phrasing that we had proposed, which specifically addressed temporary events, was moot. Now, the other issue is the hawkers and peddlers permits, but that's a separate topic. That may be a problem, but we weren't trying to address that at the moment. So I would suggest that we don't need to consider any further the definition of vending carts or vehicle. We may have an enforcement issue with regard to having a lot or business that is expanding their scope to include food trucks to come for site plan review.
So does Putter Village get its food truck back?
It was, I saw it there today.
Yes, it is.
All right, any further discussion?
I mean, how does the board feel? Does it think that we do need a site plan?
I don't think we have any opinion at all. It's none of our business right now.
Well, it is, it's being done on private property, so it is our business.
But we're not the code officer.
So we can certainly have an opinion on it, but we're not the enforcement mechanism.
Yeah. So nobody has any opinion that we need the site plan approval? That means we don't?
I think we do, it would require site plan review approval, although at this point, I'm not sure how much longer they're going to be there, but I think it should be looked at before next year.
Yeah.
A site plan review is associated with a change in a business's size and shape, and, you know, there are parking issues associated with that. If all of a sudden I have a food truck in front of my restaurant, you find that now there are more people who are going to be served, and so there may be more people coming there, and they may all be walk-ins off of the Mount Washington or something like that, but you're changing the site itself, and you're increasing the traffic to that area, so I think that a site plan is appropriate, site plan review.
You also may be using up parking spaces for the food truck.
And I thought last time we read specifically that that kind of thing was not permitted.
Well, so in the definition, in the Wolfboro definition of vending carts, it does say that food trucks are not permitted, but according to the definition, what is operating at Putters Village now does not meet the definition of a vending cart or food truck, and I'm not sure what else you would call it, but it doesn't meet the definition.
What was the criteria that they missed?
All right, I'll read it again here. So it says that, "A vending cart or vehicle is any mobile portable device not associated with an approved business at the site that is designed, constructed, or used to sell prepared foods or goods to the general public at a fixed location. The device is customarily moved to the site at the start of each business day and removed at the close of the business day. Also, the device does not require a building permit to be located at this location. For the purpose of the Wolfboro Planning and Zoning Ordinance, vending carts or vehicles are prohibited." I don't believe that's actually what it says, I believe it says food trucks, but regardless, the portion of that that I think disqualifies what is operating at Putters Village now from being considered a vending cart or vehicle is that it is associated with an approved business at the site.
That would mean that virtually any place in town could have a food truck.
Yes, Roger, I think your interpretation is correct.
That's why the site plan approval is necessary.
I agree with Vaughn, I don't think that's correct. It's not, it's a separate business operating on the property. It's not a subsidiary.
It's definitely a food truck.
Yeah, I understand your point, but consider that if somebody had a little, you know, four-by-four foot wagon with two wheels-
Hot Dog Bob, let's-
No, 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 I don't, specifically don't want to use Hot Dog Bob.
Okay.
But if somebody had a little four-foot-by-four-foot cart on two wheels that they put in front of their store and displayed goods on it for sale, would you consider that a vending cart?
Yes.
Okay. However, that cart would be associated with the business at the site, and therefore wouldn't meet the definition of vending cart in the Wolfboro ordinance.
But that would be, because it's operated by the operator of the business.
Yes, so the definition here reads, "not associated with an approved business," so I guess the question then is, what do you consider associated with an approved business? Certainly-
They're friends.
Oh, I understand they're friends, but it says an approved business, so what is an approved business? Does that mean approved by the planning board?
Business of license.
Well, I mean, if it's already been decided, even if we don't agree, it's been decided.
Certainly the ZBA has made a decision.
Yeah.
Okay, so everybody agrees we do need a site plan for these food trucks?
I would, my opinion would be that a site plan would be, a site plan review would be required.
Okay, because you really are adding to, no matter whether it's the business or not the business, but you're still adding.
But doesn't it say it's prohibited?
So that gets back to, is it considered a vending cart? It isn't according to the definition.
And I'm just, I'm going to throw it there too, didn't the sidewalk thing just go through? Approving certain two-wheel, four-wheel vehicles that roll down the sidewalk in front of your business that hang clothing on them, is that a vending cart?
I didn't read that, so I couldn't tell you. Perhaps it does meet that definition, I don't think it would, because again, that would be associated with the business, and therefore wouldn't meet the definition of vending cart.
It may also be a temporary event.
That's true. Just for completeness here, I'll read the notice of decision from the last night's ZBA meeting. It reads, "Audrey Klein motioned to dismiss the request for variance as the proposed use does not meet the definition of vending cart vehicle and is therefore, and therefore is instead an allowed use in the zone and does not need a variance. The food truck that is part of this proposal is associated with the business plan of the existing business on site, a putt-putt golf business, and therefore does not meet the definition."
Now, the real unfortunate thing is, remember how this was many years ago at this point, when the Downtown Grill had some problems with a certain code officer that kept ticketing this person for putting the little A-frame signs out, way back, I don't think we were even in town yet.
Oh, that was a sign ordinance.
This has the same type of thing, remember with the sign ordinances? Yep. And the deal was, it was only a few people that kept getting cited every single day, not the rest of the people in town. It was, I can't remember what the-
Talking about selective enforcement.
Thank you, that's what it was. This seems to be the same type of deal, because this particular food truck is not the only one in town. So there's an issue there, too.
So I understand that selective enforcement may be an issue, I don't think that's a planning board issue, though.
No.
Yeah. All right, if there's no further discussion on food trucks-
Well, again, given the Board of Adjustment's decision, maybe we do want to give a little more thought to food trucks before there's one in every corner.
Well, Roger, I agree that it's a concern and a risk, we need to determine how we want to address it. I think that Kathy's thought about site plan review is a good one. I'm not aware of Putters Village ever coming to the planning board for permission to sell food, I may be mistaken.
And the other issue that we haven't addressed is, what about the clause that it's supposed to be a not-for-profit event?
No, that has to do with temporary event permits.
Oh.
Which is outside the scope of what we've been discussing. Any other thoughts? All right.
I do have the, one agreement with Vaughn, that maybe it should be something that the public gets asked, as, is this an issue, should we all talk about it and make a definition, or should we just all ignore it when it happens? And if a food truck happens to be parked on somebody's private edge of something or other and that business owner complains, then something will happen.
So, to be clear, the definition refers to a, being associated with a business on the site. So if the vending cart or food truck, or whatever it is, is on public property, on Wolfboro Town- Wolfboro Town property, then it clearly doesn't... it's clearly prohibited, because it's not associated with a business at the site. So that would be prohibited. You can't just have a food truck roll in and set up shop in a parking space. But to Roger's point, it could set up in front of every existing business, as long as it was on private property.
I think that could be a question for the public. Should food carts be allowed on private business property?
That may be a question for the public, and then I think we would need to refine the definition of food cart, because if somebody is, as we discussed at a prior meeting, having a wedding and they want to bring in a food truck for their wedding, is that something we want to prohibit? I don't think so.
Do we want food trucks parked in front of every business in town?
Certainly that we don't, which goes back then to site plan review. Any other comments? All right. The next item on the agenda is the 2024 November meeting schedule change, which we made reference to earlier this evening. The November 5th meeting is moving to November 12th, so is not conflict with the general election. The deadline date for applications is October 22nd for that meeting, and the special use permit deadline would be October 11th. And then we will have the currently scheduled November 19th workshop as it was presently scheduled. Last item on the agenda is approval of minutes for September 3rd, 2024. Oh, I'm sorry, Kathy, yes, you're right. Well, no, we have public comment after the minutes, so let's go through the minutes first. Does anybody have any comments or corrections for the minutes?
Yes. On page 2, sixth line down, I believe Vaughn suggested a greater scale for the proposed building site. Site should be added at the end of that?
Probably site plan.
Well, it's a greater scale for the proposed building site, or well, you can put plan on there if you want it. Then on the underlying motion, I believe Doug motioned to approve the application as complete. Further down, under number 2, it should be greater than 10,000, not 1,000 square feet. On page 4, under fourth line down, I believe... What I expressed concern about was the plan's lack of location and markings with regard to the existing proposed expansion, not the plan's location and markings. Then going down the page, sixth paragraph from the bottom, I believe that should be... Julia was questioning the cutting of trees, not in cutting off trees. And, let's see, on page 6, I believe Ken Perry's question was whether the Browns Ridge Road subdivision was a conservation subdivision. It's not the only one. He specifically mentioned Browns Ridge Road. And then under food trucks, it should be Board of Selectmen, plural. And at the top of page 7, this may be correct. When Doug's comment, they could grant a special exception. If that's what you said, I demand a variance, but that's accurate. Ann Blodgett has no T at the end... two T, only one T at the end of her name, partway down the page. And I think I noted, third paragraph at the bottom, that the answer should be received in writing.
So I have just a question relative to the page 7, third line. Food trucks require state licensure, insurance, fire suppression systems to operate. So if they're licensed by the state, they must be food trucks. It's got a food truck license. It must be a food truck.
I understand what you're saying, but that's not the Wolfboro definition.
Okay.
Roger, are you all set?
I am.
Okay, I've got one on page 6. The first item, food trucks. I stated the topic needs to be reviewed by the board and may need to be addressed as a permanent use in the C1 district. That was just an example.
A permanent use or a permitted use? A permanent use or a permitted use?
A permitted use.
Thank you. Any other changes from anybody?
I move they be accepted as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. The last item is public comment.
For the short-term rent... Ann Blodgett, sorry. For the short-term rental forum, or whatever you're calling it, Matt Sullivan used to do a flyer, not just a black-and-white post. In addition, there'd be something on the website that basically said, "Public, please come." So you want people there. The one thing in the Granite State News doesn't do it. People don't read the Granite State News much anymore, sadly. So... And can you put it on the website? I know these are hard things when we don't have a website administrator, but maybe I'll even help with a poster kind of format if you give me the info.
So certainly, we can get it put up on the news section of the website.
Then we can... Then some of us will screenshot it, put it on Facebook and things like that. Okay? Thank you.
Sure.
Suzanne Ryan. To Roger's description of the proposed warrant articles in lay terms, I... It's been a while since I've done this, but I don't know if you can put under the legal question on the ballot, if you can put that brief description very simply, like Roger just described, each one of these. Would you please find out from a proper...
My understanding is that, yes, we can.
Then I think it's paramount that this year that that be done.
Yes, I believe we had...
Not a story, just...
No, I understand what you're saying, and I believe that we had wanted to do that previously, and we got poor guidance on that issue.
Yeah.
And I've since learned that, yes, it is permissible to put a, as you described, delay description.
Yeah, it's clear what it is, but it's no description of what it's going to be.
Right.
Point taken. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Suzanne.
Just to that point, Ken Perry tells me it's state law, that there has to be some sort of simple interpretation, and we did not comply with the law the way they were phrased before, so.
All right. Thank you. Anybody like to make a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.